All right, I call to order the Gladstone City Council Work Session for October 26, 2021. It's 5:30 PM. Per the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the City of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. This meeting will be conducted using a hybrid model. The council will be in person at City Hall. The attendees will utilize the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the City Council, staff and the public all have access to this meeting. The work session is a time for the council and staff to discuss matters openly and informally, and public comment is not part of our agenda and is not allowed. Attendees will not be able to speak during this work session. We will not have a consent agenda, business from the audience, nor business from the council. The only item to be discussed is the City Council, excuse me, City of Gladstone Pavement Management Program Budget Options Report. And again, as I said before we started the meeting, there's 10 people in the room, so we are not all going to have our mics on at the same time, and we will try hard to speak into the microphone. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Here.
Counselor Hartman?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Garlington?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here, could everyone please stand for the flag salute? Thank you. So again, the only item is discussion regarding the City of Gladstone Pavement Management Program Budget Options Report. Steph?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Tonight is really an informal conversation to talk to you about our pavement management program. Even though this program was put together five, almost six years ago, we have a new Public Works Director. We've got all of our plans in place. We've been able to generate revenue from various sources, which we'll talk about, into our streets budget. And we publicly wanted to talk to you about, we're ready to do some projects. So tonight's conversation is to kind of just update you a little bit on the condition of our streets, how much money we have to do some projects, and then focus in on what we think our primary focus should be for the next couple of years. So we have Kathy Brocker, our finance consultant here, and we have Darren Carnapronoli, our Public Works Director. And so I'm gonna go ahead and have Darren go over the executive summary of the report.
Thanks, Jackie. So like Jackie said, in 2016, the city hired capital asset and pavement services to rate our roads and to start a pavement management program. Our roads rated at a 67 on the pavement condition index, which is a scale of zero to 100. Since then, the city has not done, not a lot has been done to the roads in town. We've had two rounds of slurry seal, one just this last year, and then one in 2019. There have been some roads that have been repaved, but all in all, since then, the pavement index has obviously dropped significantly, I would suggest, or guess, anywhere from five to 10 points, depending on the roadway. The one thing we want to talk about tonight is, where do we go from here? We do have some money saved up. The roads are rated, you know, in a high, fair, poor, and very poor category. Unfortunately, the very poor category are roads that, with our budget, there's really nothing that can be done to those roads at this time. And a lot of the poor roads unfortunately can't be done, but the thought behind it is to keep the roads that are in fair and good condition in fair and good, good condition. So what we're wanting to, to talk about is, you know, where do we start? How do we go forward with, with getting these roads completed? One of the things that we've talked about is, we have arterials, we have collectors, and we have residential's. Majority of our road are residential roads. And with that, most of those, obviously, since there's more road there, are in the fair to poor category. I would like to focus, going forward, on the residential streets in town to bring those roads up as best that we can within the next couple of years. And then after we've gone through that, we can go out, get our roads rerated, find out exactly where we are, and figure out a strategy on how we're going to be able to afford to improve our street system within the city.
Part of when this, this work was done, there was numbers thrown in, roughly $12.5 million to fix our streets. We understand the, the current climate in the community, at the national level, and there is not an appetite, in our opinion, to go out for any type of fee, for a streets fee, or a bond at this point. And so what we wanted to focus on is, I'm gonna have Kathy explain how much money that we are comfortably spending on, that we have, that we will comfortably spend on our, on our streets through this biennium. That gives us two years then to figure out if, at that time, the city wants to explore any other revenue-type options to get more of their streets done. So Kathy, do you want to talk a little bit about our revenues?
Revenues, absolutely. Just to give you a real quick oversight of where our revenues come from within the street fund. It is what's designated as a special revenue fund. So all monies that come into this fund are purely for expenditure on the transportation fund. They can't go to water, they can't go to sewer, et cetera. Strictly for this transportation system. So we get our local taxes that are generated by the vehicle registration fees that started up just a couple of years ago with the county. $370,000 for, for the biennium is budgeted. Our state shared taxes, the gas tax that we get from the state of Oregon, based on our population, that's going to generate about $1.8 million in the biennium. ORS requires that we take 1% of that, of our total gas tax, and we dedicate that for bike lanes and sidewalks. So we have about $90,000 set aside for that. The right-of-way fees, telecom, we get 5% of revenues coming in through our rights-of-way for users utilizing that. Right-of-way fees from our other utilities, Lake Oswego, Wes and Oak Lodge pay us 5% of their revenues to use our right-of-way. And then within the city, our city utilities also pay to use our right-of-way. It is not over and above our, our water and sewer fees, very important point. It was absorbed within the water and sewer fees. We just take a portion of that, transfer it over to the road fund for the rights-of-way. The transportation SDCs, those are assessed on new growth impacting infrastructure. We don't get a tremendous amount of that, but whenever there is new growth within the city, we get a fee for that. And it's a dedicated revenue source for certain projects, things that are outlined in the master plan, and then there will be a percentage calculation done on that by the consultant firm does that, as far as how much of SDC money we can spend on that. Then we get some other miscellaneous revenues, such as row street opening permits for $235, a few other various things, but that pretty well encapsulates all the monies that we generate to be able to utilize. So as far as our budget goes then, for expenditure side of it, again, we have the money for the bike walk and, uh, bikeway and sidewalk improvements that are sitting in the budget. There's about $90,000 sitting there right now. System and improvements, we have $1,581 for the biennium, round it to $1,582, that we currently have sitting there. Again, that's a two-year dollar amount. We have $550,000 in our reserve from SDCs, monies that are available for specific types of projects. And then we also have an equipment replacement reserve that we set aside every budget cycle also to. It's currently up to $622,000. So we're always saving ahead for any equipment purchases that we may need. So that's our total capital, comes down to $2,844. The road fund does have a $400,000 contingency, which is a good contingency for it, of the $2,844. I'd hate to see anything ever spent down to zero. It just doesn't seem like a healthy practice to me. Reserve from SDC is, of course, that's gonna be very constricted on what we can use. But the, and then the bike, uh, bikeway and sidewalk would be constricted also too. And equipment reserve, again, as I say, the 622 is for equipment. So basically, it comes down to $1,581, which of that I would recommend that we maintain $400,000 to $500,000 to proceed money into the following biennium. So rounding it, you know, at least a million. We could go higher if you were comfortable with it, but I think there is at least $1 million for the next two years. Plus, as they say, funds out of the reserves that are applicable.
Any questions on that? Thank you, Kathy. One of the things that we recognized when this pavement study was done is, is it was never formally adopted by the City Council, which is okay, but generally, cities like to adopt PCI, a number of, this is what we're gonna strive in our city to have our streets be at. And Gladstone hasn't done that. We're not recommending that we do that at this point, because this is almost six years old, and we'd like to see how many of our streets we could get taken care of for the $1 million, have it rerated, have the City Council adopt a PCI by resolution. That gives us the priorities that we need then to understand when our revenues come in, where, where we're gonna focus on getting our streets back up to where they need to be. I was surprised that overall, we were in a fair condition, and maybe it's just because the streets I see are all very poor, and that's why people tend to think that citywide, they're in poor condition. But still, it's recommended that our PCI be up more to a level of an 80 to an 85. And so with that, I think we would open it up for some conversations. Do you have any concerns? Would you rather we hold on to that $1 million for a couple more years? Build more equity? We're just looking for some guidance. We are comfortable, though, like Kathy said, in spending up to $1 million, hopefully, in the next spring on targeted areas of our system.
Counselor Garlington, any questions?
Okay, so I guess I should've, should've looked a little bit closer at what Kathy's talking about, and then what our budget report says. Because I'm not understanding why, what I was thinking in my mind of this $6,561, or $6 mil, $6.5 million? Okay, yeah. That, that's, that's what we're talking about here. And then you're saying we have $1 million?
We're talking about the capital monies that are available. That's all we're talking about in relation to the pavement, would be the capital monies. And that totals down to $2,844.680. The $6,561 is all personnel costs, operations and maintenance costs, your transfers out, things like that. Those are not monies that are available for use on pavement, maintenance and improvements.
Okay, so if people are looking at our budget and they're saying, well, there's $6 million plus, we don't get $6 million plus for road and streets?
Well, we do, but it's all, there's a lot of other costs that are involved in maintaining your roads and streets too, as itemized on the reports. You know, personnel services.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want that understood.
Yeah, it's, it's a very, very valid point, there is no doubt.
That's all.
Counselor Hartman?
Thank you. Where, so on the, like, the table one on 1-5, at the time, so the, the current conditions had the percentages. Where would you say we land right now? In terms of our, on, sorry, on 1-5? Where would you say the current condition, like, the percentages are at the time? Like, it had what we were currently doing, and then, you know, if we did a $575,000, those percentages would, is that the one we're kind of in line with, or higher?
So, so where we currently are is, our, our PCI back in 2016 was the 67. Since then, we have done very little to help raise that PCI. If you would've stayed and done everything in this, in the book, as the book brings out the scenarios, and with the scenarios, it has different maintenance strategies and stuff like that. If you'd have done everything in that five-year period, it would have brought us up to a 68 from a 67.
Okay.
So since then, we have done some, but it wouldn't be enough to, to bring our PCI up. I mean, we're only talking one point difference. I would say that our, our PCI has dropped, I would say anywhere from five to 10 points overall, from when they were originally rated.
So more like 62, 57, 57 to 62?
Yes, I would say so.
Yeah, 'cause taking into account the ice storm, I can't imagine that, that did anything well for our streets. Okay, and then in terms of, like, my biggest question is, the thought process with, like, the intersection of the other projects that we need to do, like plumbing, will that go into account when we plan this? Like, there's no point in repaving a road if we're just gonna dig it back up and do the plumbing and whatnot? Is that, that will be a part of the thought process? Because they asking for this money to go here and then not thinking about the other projects that we have to do?
Right, yeah, so when, when we go in and, and do a project, much like the West Clarkness Project, we'll come in and we will, we will pave in those areas when we need to be able to do that. We're talking more on, on top of that with this.
Okay.
I mean, when you come in and do that street, yes, for example, was it East Clarendon? They redid that street, that would've helped bring the PCI up from what it was on that particular section of road. But when you come in and do, you know, major repairs, like the Barclay storm line that's gonna be done here this next, next year, we'll come in and we'll repave that entire section of road, which will bring that PCI up. So we're talking, aside from those projects, other pavement strategies going forward as far as paving is concerned.
Okay, okay.
And a lot of that is part of the public messaging, so people understand maybe why a street didn't get done is because it's got infrastructure that needs to go in at first too. So that's why tonight, we can't come to you and say, we're gonna do street X, Y, and Z. Because we do have to look at, if we hire a contractor, you want them to go into an area where it maximizes the most efficiency on what that they can get done. And also considering whether or not any of those streets will need other fixes or infrastructure put into them as well.
Right.
Yes.
That was my thought for right now.
Thank you. Counselor Todd?
So if our PCI was at 67 in 2016, and we've dropped five to 10, if we considered waiting a couple more years with the million and, and watching it grow, how much, how much do you think it would grow in comparison to how much our PCI would drop? If we waited a length of time, like two years? I know that's crystal ball, but just, you know, thought processes on that.
Oh, I mean, if you're talking in a five-year period, we're, we're, we're talking anywhere from five to seven. So, I mean, if you kind of did the math in there, you'd probably be dropping at least a couple, another couple points. The key is, is to try to keep the roads that are in the good condition in the good condition, and take the fair roads and move them up closer to the good condition, if not in the good condition. So what we don't want to do is, we don't want to, to go backwards with the roads that can have, you know, inexpensive treatments done to them now. Sorry seal, for example, we'll continue to do that. That, that comes out of O and M, so that's a different line item in the budget. But we'll continue to do those. We're, but the main paving aspect, that's what's gonna, these roads that we're talking about are gonna need going forward. And when I say paving, we're not talking about going in, doing grinds and overlays, and, and taking it all out. We're talking putting inch-and-a-half layers over the existing. If there's patches that need to be done, those patches would be done before that happens. Crack sealing, things like that would be done before that happens. So it's not like we're going in and reconstructing roads. Those are the roads that are in the poor, the lower end of the poor condition, and in the very poor condition, that completely need to be reconstructed. So by going in and, and doing overlays, then overlays over the top of the existing, that will help bring our PCI up, and it will, we'll be able to get a lot more work done with the money that we have, doing it that way versus complete reconstruct.
Yeah, I think along the lines of public messaging, slurry sealing. You know, you hear about that all the time. People are like, oh, we're slurry sealing again. And could you share why we, why we slurry seal? Is because they're the ones we're saving at this point, that we can.
Right, any, anytime that you can prolong the life of a road, I mean, the average life expectancy is, you know, roughly 20 to 25 years. Anytime that you can expand that, make that longer, it, it helps keep it from falling into the lower categories that need the major reconstruction. So you can slurry seal, you could slurry seal three, four times if you really wanted to. But it depends on the condition of the road at the time. You know, if the road is all broken up and, and just, you know, it just is beyond that, it's not viable to do a slurry seal over something like that. At that point, that's when you need to come in and do an overlay over the top of it. So the slurry seal is gonna take a, a road, it'll raise the, the pavement index on a road roughly anywhere from four to seven points from what it currently is. And most of the roads that there, that are selected for slurry seal are in the higher end of the fair, of the fair category, or in the lower end of the good category. To keep that from slipping, the idea, the whole concept is to keep it from going backwards.
And I wanted to be clear to Kathy that the slurry seal money is separate from that $1 million.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, it's considered an operations and maintenance cost. And we budget for that every single year, and that's where funding for that comes out of. So it's not affecting the, the $1 million at all.
And it was an immediate visual accomplishment when we did it this year, because of COVID, we didn't do any slurry or overlays last year. But people thought we had gotten streets when the overlay went in and did that. And so those are actually visible projects that we want to continue to do that, to show people that we're trying to keep those streets at a higher grade.
Okay, I just had one other question, I'm sorry. It's so, I, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but, you know, with construction and material and everything having gone up, I mean, at this point, it's never gonna get cheaper than right now to do whatever we need to do, I'm assuming. I mean, right, I mean, if you look at like a year ago, I'm thinking of even this project back over here when we did the entire sewer curbs, storm and road. What, what is that street back there that, that was all done on? That was Addy?
Watts.
Was it Watts? But we did it up on Addy, I thought we did it up on Addy.
Addy was a few years.
Few years before that. I mean, like, the, the linear foot cost from then to by the time that we did East Clarendon was like, you know, quite a bit, or a couple hundred per linear foot, you know, different, so, okay, thank you.
And we're estimating spring to get projects done. If, if we get the guidance from you to move forward with spending this $1 million on our streets, that's what we would put together, prioritize our areas to target, and try to get a contractor in the spring to do that.
Counselor Tracy?
So thank you, Mayor. So going back to 2016, when this report was generated, I'm assuming then that the $400,000, which was the current funding on the roads, was not expended over that five-year period of time. Otherwise, we wouldn't have lost points, as Director Carnapronoli has pointed out. We would've maintained or gained a point, correct? Or, I, I guess I'm lost here. Did we not spend this $400,000 a year over the last five years?
I can't, I, I have not looked at it from that perspective, Counselor Tracy, but we have spent monies over the last four or five years, as far as exactly what they were targeting. We would have to research that and come back to you on that. There has been monies expended. We normally have about, about $400,000 excess that we can reserve into there. It has grown to $1,500,000, as you can see. So there has been, you know, we had cut back. Yes, it wasn't a full $400,000 a year spent, nor was it a full $400,000 a year for a specific five years saved.
Okay. Uh-oh, I don't, I don't even know if, Mayor, if you were on the council at this time, where you, when this report came in? So, so, yes, so as I see this as scenario planning, it's scenario building, what was given to us was a consultant came to us and said, look, this is where you need to be to, for the most part, just maintain, yeah. And then, you know, going all the, the way over here. So what I hear, though, and Director, I, I think you're correct, most likely in this, what I hear, though, is it takes us over into the far right-hand column, which is a zero-funding column. What I think we need to make sure our folks here is, what was the amount over the five years? If you had $4 million, we were looking at spending $2 million over that five-year spread, how much of that money was spent? Because as this consultant so eloquently provides, this scenario matrix, the rubric says, here's where you are, the current, current funding, here's where you'll be at zero, which is, and the director is pointing out, that's probably where we are, which is zero funding. I, I've got a feeling people, folks are gonna ask us why over that five years.
And we can certainly quantify.
And I think it's a very valid question from their standpoint, because this is a very involved report, and I appreciate it. I just think that they were saying to us, the consultants, here's where you are, here's your areas, here's your lanes. And we ended up kind of over on the shoulder, or maybe just a wheel or two into the ditch. And so I think we're gonna have folks who are gonna question us about why that is. And to be honest with you, I can't give them an answer, right?
Right.
The other thing I was gonna comment on is, I really like this map, and perhaps the director could help us with getting another version of it. The larger PCI conditions map across the city, I think, is an important map. Darren, I think it's something that gives us all kind of a really good idea about what we're looking at too. And it helps us with that conversation that we're having with folks, because as we talk about the very poor streets, and I believe parts of, it looks like eastern half of Clarendon, it's pretty poor. And I didn't realize how poor it was down at that area. This is a good map for us. I, I know it, it, it's not the proudest thing for us to have out there, but at the same time, it gives us the ability to have the honest conversations with our citizens and, and be able to say, look, this is part of, based on your testimony about what we should do and how we're looking at things, this is part of having to go back. And at some point in time, we're gonna have to have some funding to be able to really do the work on these streets. Otherwise, the streets become, I, I mean, at some point, they're gonna become decommissioned. We'll have too big of potholes, no matter how many of our folks we send out to try to change the conditions of these streets, the alligatoring, you know, they're just not gonna be a commissionable street, right? So we want to make sure we're really clear with folks. I think this map's important for us. I'm not sure that it has to be blown up to huge size, but it certainly, if it was a bigger map, it would give us a lot, I think, us as counselors, the ability to really be able to talk to our folks and talk about the planning going ahead. This is a very interesting report, and you have a huge challenge ahead of you. So we, I appreciate that, and we'll do what we can here. But, um, yeah, it's another one of those things where people want to flush their toilets, they want to drive on nice roads. Not everybody owns a Jeep in town. So, yeah, we probably need to be on top of this.
And, and we appreciate that, because we are being honest. There is a lot of deferred maintenance in Gladstone, whether it's our infrastructure or our streets. And we are taking the positive approach of doing what we can with what we have. But at some point, we're gonna have to publicly recognize we need more revenue to fix a greater number of our streets that do need to be decommissioned.
Yeah, and I think at the same time, I think it's fair to go out publicly and talk about deferred maintenance, because I don't think it always rests on the folks sitting around the table. And I, I was making a comment in the parking lot to this fact. Somebody else owns this. We own it now, but somebody else owns these decisions. And I'd like that to be part of the message as well. Thank you, no further.
Counselor Ripley?
I think the only question I have is, what would, to redo a road and do it right, what would you estimate the cost for one block would be right now?
Well, a lot of that's gonna depend on, you know, the road and the condition of the subbase, the length of the road and everything like that. I believe in this report here, to come in and do, you know, all-new base, everything from top to bottom, you're looking at probably $115 a square foot-ish.
you're looking at probably a hundred and fifteen dollars as a square foot-ish. And that's in two thousand and sixteen dollars. So throw a fifteen percent inflator on that, probably get you pretty close. So not cheap. And that's the whole strategy with this, is to try to keep the roads from getting to that point so that we don't have to pay those high dollars when we can do treatments that are significantly less to keep the road in a good condition.
I think the only other comment that I'll make if you, if we're by your house, uh, on Bellevue, Bellevue and Hereford, the north side of the intersection, if you looked at that when it rains, mud comes out of the ground. So right now, there's about a three-foot mud circle in the street. But there's no base there. So they can't, you. Well, there's no road there. I've been shoveling mine in my garbage can.
Counselor Alexander.
I guess, okay, I just want to understand, um, the arterial, what's a collector street? I it's less travel, less traffic, slower speed, so.
Yeah, so collector is what takes all the residential to the arterials and vice versa. Our from the arterial to the residential, typically medium, we'll call it density as far as the the traffic-wise. Obviously, your residential is low traffic, your arterial is high traffic. So it's kind of the in-between, running from, you know, residential to the arterial.
Okay, because you mentioned the residential is what we're really is the worst so far that you're seeing. This was an outside assessment from somebody. Now, you being the director, you you checked it, drove around and seen. Do you agree with this assessment, or do you want to make some changes? And do we prioritize by score, by money to spend, or, you know, certain roads? How how we go in that route?
Well, I I have gone out and looked. With the scenario that they put together, I looked at those roads. Some of those roads definitely um need to be done. I mean, they're all in there for a reason, right? So they definitely need to be done. Some of those roads, in my opinion, have gotten worse since then, significantly worse. And those would be roads that I probably wouldn't add to the list as far as what we're talking about tonight. Um, and then you got to kind of look at it, too, is is they only did it based off of a dollar amount. So it doesn't list every single road in the 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 book as far as, you know, if you did this road, it it it's kind of based off of the what you can get with a dollar amount that you have provided. Um, and then to be able to bring that up the quickest, I guess, is probably the best way to put it. Obviously, you spend more money, you're going to get, you know, a higher PCI. But that that's where, you know, kind of where we're at. Do we do we go to the arterials and do the arterials, which, you know, there's not a lot of arterials? But what needs to be done there is going to be much more expensive than doing a residential street where we can come in and do an inch and a half overlay and get more work done on those versus coming in and doing an arterial or a collector.
Okay, that's, yeah, I get it. All right, thank you.
All right, the only comment that I have is it's awful that we haven't been doing this work for the last five years or even twenty years or however long we've completely deferred this. We need to start doing something, and it needs to be visible. And people need to kind of have an idea of what we're going to be doing as far as future projects so that they feel that they're a part of the process. So from us tonight, you need a consensus. Is that what you would like? Oh, Counselor Garlington.
So when you have somebody come into a neighborhood and they make a single cut into the road, and, you know, let's say they dig up a hole and then or a new build has come in and for some reason, they've had to dig up the road. Why does that not get repaired to the way it was before they dug it up? Happens all over town. I drive all over town.
Well, if you're referring to pavement cuts and stuff like that, I mean, we're not going to and then restoring it back to normal or the way that it was, meaning repave the whole entire road?
No, but at least fix the hole. So it's not a dip, so it's not noticeably a a crack now in the street. Why do those not get fixed?
Well, when the the thing is, is what you've got to remember is when a road's done brand new, uh, all the equipment, everything that's done with it, with the compaction and everything that's involved with it, it's much easier to reach those compaction levels instead of a little tiny ditch trying to get the compaction and everything with that. We do get sinkage in those. Um, we know that there are a lot of them around town. Um, and we try to patch those the best that we can. But ultimately, there's only so much that you can do with that. That um, what we run into is there's a lot of times where people do not get right-of-way permits, and they'll come in and they will cut into a road, and we have no idea it even happened. And so when they patch it all back, we may not even know that, we don't even know how it was put back in. So, you know, it's kind of a like catch-22. Yes, we have a a permit for right-of-way, but we're not here twenty-four, seven and on the weekends. And there's a lot of work that happens, I guess, we'll call it at night, where we don't get to see it, so.
Right, okay, good to know.
I also think, correct me if I'm wrong, Darren, that policy can be set that if, like Clarendon Street, complete reconstruct, that if the city wanted to put a moratorium on curb cuts, that you can't just go in for five years after we've done a street, that we have the ability to put some of those policies in place as well. That if we do a complete reconstruct on a street, the contractor can't just go cut a little patch, so.
Right.
I think there are tools that we can, that we can bring forward as we start doing some uh, major repairs on our street.
Right.
That we can do.
Okay, because I have had, I mean, even at my house, I've had, I, you know, all of a sudden, I hear somebody out back, and I go out there, and I'm like, what are you doing out here? Well, we're doing work. Well, nobody told me, and this is my property. I know you have a right-of-way, but I should know that that's happening. So, of course, I called the city and said, what's going on? And I think that that's something that people in their own neighborhoods needs need to do because then things don't get fixed like they should be fixed, which is what's happened in my neighborhood a couple of times now this last year, so. Um, grants, federal money, where where have we looked into that? Um, sidewalks have grants, uh, you know, walk-to-school grants for your sidewalks. Where's the road money at and who's getting it?
And we are decentralized here in grant investigation as far as each department normally investigates. For that, that sources. So I personally cannot answer. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I personally cannot answer as far as looking into roads grants. No, I have not done that in the time I've been here. Has has it been done in the past? I'm not aware of any. We've not had any grant funding through the roads department since I've been here. So I'm assuming, I I really don't know what to say other than when there is staff time available to pursue those types of things, there there it's definitely a good area to pursue.
Okay.
Community development block grant funding and the STIF, the State Transportation Investment Funds. There's a couple that are out there, but they're very, very competitive. But the CDBG, we did get awarded funding from the county. And on your next agenda, we will be entered into a contract to do ADA ramps and sidewalks. So we do leverage with the county through the state and feds when there's opportunities for us to do that. And like I said, you will see that next month on your agenda.
And the reason you're not seeing that revenue come through, it's a very valid point, Jackie, thank you for bringing it up, is that we only pay our share on a CDBG grant. The county runs the whole project. They get the the funds, and then we pay our share to the county. So that is some of the monies that has been paid out in the past out of systems and improvements. But it's only a small amount, and we don't, we don't see the grant revenue.
Okay.
The downside is that we don't have complete control over the contractor that we hire, which is the issue that we had.
Was that was that East Clarendon? Was that sort of over there?
That was grant-funded, but we were at the mercy of the county and the contractor who worked very well with the city through that. But again, we do try to leverage our funding when we can to do projects.
Okay, that's good. And then is on this list, I kind of, when I came to this list of streets and I'm looking at them, of course, you go straight over to this little number, and you're thinking, who has a two? Who has a two? Because that's not good, right? So I thought I would see, like, highlighted streets that we, you would say, hey, we're taking this off the list because these are done. So is none of this done? Because Clarendon, or is we just don't have that list?
So that that's the actual report that was published online. Um, we do have, uh, well, I should say, I have a list of what has been done versus what was in the in the uh, book. So it it, what you're looking at is they're not, it's just not going to come off of there with that. It's a static report. So I have highlighted streets that, you know, we've done slurry seals on these. We've done, you know, full rebuild on this, you know, pavement on this, that type of a thing.
Okay, I guess I would have liked to have seen that just to say, wow, not all of this is doom and gloom, that some of it has been done, kind of thing.
And I think how we can package that is if you give us the guidance to move forward, when we come back before we go out to bid, we would bring you an updated, this is what's been done, and these are the streets we're going to focus on.
Okay.
And package that for you.
Okay, that that I do like. And then, um, one more question. Now, I forgot what it was, so I guess it wasn't that important. Oh, yes, I do, I do. So I saw over here, and I was looking at this map. Explain to all of us how, what control the county has on which roads as opposed to what is completely our responsibility is. Well, I was looking at the colored ones. Um, uh, ninety-two, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety. So it shows, you know, you're you're looking at like Arlington and which are straight onto McLaughlin and Webster and um, Oakfield, which are, you know, hugely fed by everybody in Clackamas County to get down to two oh five. Let's not do those ones, and people won't use them to go down two oh five. Okay, all right. But but anyway, I'm just wondering, where is, because I know I've heard before, when you get off of the freeway and you come across the bridge and you come down to uh, what uh, Oakfield Road, that stops right there, that that was taken care of by somebody above us?
That's the state. So ODOT goes from basically, what is that, Evergreen uh, lane on the other side of two oh five?
Right.
All the way down to just before, just past that intersection at Oakfield. That is all state.
Okay.
Then when you get out to ninety-nine, it's the same type of a thing where ninety-nine stops. You come in, uh, a footage, I don't have the footage right here. That's where their responsibility stops and the city takes over.
Okay.
And then when you get to outside of the city limits, like on Oakfield or Webster, once you get outside of that city boundary, from there over is county. Anything inside the city boundary is city.
Dang.
So maybe getting a map that depicts that more clearly is what Counselor Garlington is saying would be helpful for the public to understand.
Yeah, so.
There is, yeah, on the one fifty-three, the roads he's talking about are not like highlighted in the color. So on McLaughlin, the bridge over, there's no color on them. So I'm assuming that those are the ones that are not, like, those are run by the state or the county.
Is that how you read that?
Oh, yes, I see what you're talking about.
I designed like.
I'm just wondering, what what if what if some of these bigger roads could we ask for help?
None.
Okay.
Right, I don't know.
I just want the city folks to know that these are are all our responsibility.
Yeah. Yeah.
Darn.
Sure, there's a lot more orange and red on there, too, now.
So as we go forward, uh, Director, we have this uh, potential for the diversion impact based on the tolling. Is there a way, and I'm I'm just guessing because there's software for everything. Is there a way to do a load analysis on like Arlington and these other roads that we're going to maintain at these higher levels to get an estimate? If we were able to do trip counts and load analysis on the roads, to get any kind of an idea as to what um, that lifespan of the road or the, you know, usable life on that road is going to be useful life.
Right.
Because I'm afraid that what we're going to do is we may end up investing a lot of money in some of these roads, going to be highly impacted by an inordinate load potentially. Don't know for how long, probably for as long as it'll take for us to put up toll booths at both of those intersections at Arlington to toll in our city to pay for our roads. Um, but I think it would be really foolish for us to go forward without trying to at least build some scenarios around what that impact might actually mean to those roads in the city. Because we're, especially with Arlington, we could spend a lot of our money on Arlington because of that impact. And it's going to be an impact that's not our city citizens. It's not, it's just because somebody else is grabbing money someplace else and diverting the traffic across our city. Is there a way we can maybe set up to do that or like at least do some kind of analysis of that?
Um, the trip count, yeah, definitely. And I would assume that with that tolling project, um, that ODOT would be doing some of that as far as is the trip count.
I got to be really honest with you. I I'm, I I I love to to be able to agree with you, but I don't see that. And and I'm not sure that a very many people really right now really trust ODOT for a lot of things. And this is not one I would trust them with, not given the way that they presented the project to us as a city city council.
Right, so, yeah, it's, but I mean, trip counts, that's that's pretty easy to to get. I mean, you you put out the the ropes and, you know, you're counting cars, basically. Um, the load, you know, that's, that one's going to be a little bit more difficult to do without, you know, going in and um, seeing what's underneath there. I mean, to be honest with you, you'd have to go in and do some potholing, take some core samples, see what you've got. And that's going to determine a lot of that. Uh, obviously, that's an expense. Um, but I mean, that would be the best way to go about doing that.
And I think your point is well-taken because now we're going into a a different kind of combined topic. But we don't want to spend money on streets that if tolling comes in and are impacted, if there's diversion funds, that money should be fixing those types of streets. So we're trying to be cognizant. I know all of you just signed that we still don't want tolling. And that's Gladstone's stance on it, but we agree, which is why we want to focus on the residential side because we don't know what that's going to do. I'm happy to follow up with ODOT to see if they've done any load capacity on that as well.
It seems to me like they're, you know, they're covering their base to a certain degree with diversion funds and talking about the topic. But I don't think, I don't think very many of us have been satisfied with some of the answers. And so, you know, we have to plan for it and prepare for it because our citizens are going to be on the hook for the cost, and it's going to be an additional cost to them paying the toll, some of them. So I'm I'm sure that they will be really happy with paying for that road twice.
Well, and some of the things that we can do with that, too, is, you know, go through trucks, things like that will help considerably. That'll take a lot of the weight off of the road. Um, so there's a few different strategies we can work with that, um, that could help that in the future. But um, yeah, unfortunately, to be able to get the data, it's it's not not all that easy.
I think if you go to ODOT and ask for that, if they did, I'm sure, I think they did that. But they did that during, like, the height of COVID, where no one was driving. So we're going to need a recount regardless of that because no one was going anywhere. So it's like, oh, look, only fifty cars drove over. Like, no, like. Um, I did have one quick question. Um, can we circle back to what you were talking about with slurry seal? Um, so we already have funds allocated for slurry sealing roads, which we can take some of our fair streets or our good streets and keep them there or move them up? Is that what I heard correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so then this one million is not for any slurry sealing. This is for other bigger projects?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
I did have one question. Um, this was along the lines with Counselor Garlington. Um, and do we have through our website where people can check if there's right-of-way permits that have been asked for in a certain area? Because with so many houses for sale during this housing boom, you notice a house goes up for sale, you might know this, house goes up for sale, there's somebody does a sewer check, mostly in lower Gladstone. Um, seems like every house that goes up for sale, all of a sudden, the sewer needs to be repaired. That means they come in, they tear up the road, they do, they replace it, whatever. It needs to be done. But it needs to be done properly. And it seems like every time I see a sign go up a week or two later, when that house sells, somebody's replacing something in their sewer line. So do we have a way to check that, that, um, you know, I mean, not everybody's going to be Mrs. Kravitz, like, I'm going to be. So do we have a way to check that, that, you know, I mean, not everybody's going to be Mrs. Kravitz, like I'm going to be. But I would go on and be like, is there one for this, this intersection, or this one hundred block, or could we do something like that?
Right, no, we currently do not have that. I mean, all those come through Public Works. You know, if somebody wanted to call and check on a status of a permit, that's something that can always be done. I'm told, I've not seen it, that there is software out there that you can, can do that type of a thing, where it could be online and people can, you know, view, you know, whatever it is that they, they're wanting to view, I'm assuming. But I, I have not seen.
But we don't have that. It was just, I know that there for a while, we didn't even, I mean, when, when I first came on, we weren't even really doing the right-of-way permits. There wasn't a lot of oversight over that. And so that was, was huge on doing that. Those companies, if it fails, do they have to come back and fix it even after the fact?
Yeah, so there, so once the, once they get a final on a right-of-way permit, there is a one-year tolling period. And then after that, once that one-year tolling period comes up, if there are issues with a patch or whatever it may be that was in the right-of-way, they're on the hook to come back to make those repairs.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Can I just add to that? And then, but they are, they're doing the work based on our construction design and standards, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so we need to make sure the citizens are hearing that.
Yes, thank you.
And those construction standards, is that available online also?
I believe it is. I'd have to take a look to be sure.
And that's a fairly new document.
Yes, it's a new document, yeah, which we had no standards before. Which is a lot of the problem.
One more question. So let me understand this. If you cut into our road at all, our roads, you have to have a permit, period, end of story, unless it's the city. Or does the city have to get a permit to cut into our roads?
You are correct.
Good to know. So if, if somebody starts cutting in front of your house, and you're pretty sure that it's not the city, and nobody notified you about that, you can be, Mrs. Kravitz, and say, hey, somebody's cutting out in front of my house, and I'm a little concerned about the fact that nobody knows about it.
Right, and I think at that point, you know, if they, if they contacted Public Works, we'd look up, see if they had a permit. If they didn't have a permit, then it would go to code enforcement for them to do their piece with that, usually a stop-work order until they have the permit.
Code enforcement would take care of that?
Yeah, so code enforcement would then do what, you know, follow the code as far as that's concerned, and then they would have to get a permit to continue doing work from Public Works. We've had it happen a few times.
Government moves at glacier speed.
Yes, we know that. Okay, so from, what you want from us then is a consensus to move forward with the million dollars?
Yeah, and we want to maximize what we can get done with the funding that we have. We'll bring back a proposal to council in spring. And then let's see what we want to do about our PCI, maybe get rerated, and then talk about future revenues. But I think for the next year and a half, two years, we just get projects done.
Okay, Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel, yes, so move forward. So this is all that we had on the agenda tonight. So next would be someone to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Hartman to adjourn. Any further discussion? I don't see any hands. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, meeting adjourned at six twenty-five PM.